I always have to look my password up.
I need my email so I wouldn't forget. Yeah, I turned on.
5:30 I'll go ahead and file a meeting to order. And we'll do the call to place. Do we have them on public? I don't think so. Sandy, we're going to talk tonight?
I'm just considering.
Well then, we have no time for this. So there's no additions to the agenda? Or didn't have anything?
For me.
Okay, so motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
By Linda?
Second.
I can buy Tim. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Or two. Superintendent report.
So you all, I gave everybody a hard copy of the memorandum. I'm not sure where we are with people getting on to get them. And I was, I couldn't upload it yesterday. So we were supposed to, this is the second Monday in a row we were supposed to meet with truancy department. So hopefully by Wednesday we're going to meet with them and roll out kind of what our process is to address the concerns they had last May or when they were at it. Or maybe, yeah. And get that going. And made some school visits last week. And I would like to, I said it in my weekly newsletter, but I would like to applaud all the teachers and schools that went to the Waucheepee and everything for the youth day on Thursday for the Rosebud thing. That was pretty cool. We're going to get our kids enrolled. We do have some classrooms that are getting pretty overcrowded. We have to start thinking outside the box on how to support that. I do have some updates for you for Littleburg, but we'll do that in exec. And that's about it. Oh, the biggest thing too, if anybody asks you, they've asked that nobody goes around the middle school track. They're closing it out.
Good.
Yeah, I saw the...
Yeah. There's still some cars that are trying to get back there.
Dirt work started.
And then, what's his name?
Do we have somebody that's taking care of the prairie dog situation back there? Because it's kind of out of control.
We need to, you know, obviously I think being put into request, I think we're looking at trying to find someone to come in and do that.
If they don't deserve somebody privately, because there's a lot of ranchers.
We're actually looking privately, so...
Local ranchers and farmers that go out and get certified in that too.
Yeah. We are looking for someone, right?
Okay, just, because they're pretty, they're... I mean, it's going to do no good to put a new track in if the prairie dogs are just going to take it out. There's a lot of them. You got your certification? We could bunny suit you up.
I did.
We could bunny suit you up and put you out there. Does the board have anything for Roberta?
No.
Always remind at this time, because I, we need to add that proposed Todd County School District policy, BAAE, the school board evaluation. It was handed out on the 14th, so add it to the next regular meeting. And then, before the night's over, we need to figure out a policy work night. And then it's Josh, our designated district employee responsible for it. Okay, because we need to make sure our hard copy book is up to date here. And the website, it's in bad shape. It is. And I, and I personally, this is just me personally, I personally do not like where it all runs consecutive. I like it where it has the sheet where it tells you the policies, I mean, and then you can go and click on that certain policy. On some of them, he has it where it's all, and then if you try and print it, you better know which sections you're printing, otherwise you'll print a hundred pages. So, I mean, when we set that up, it would be nice if Josh could be there for that. And then, I checked with Chad to see if we would have funds available, because the Associated School Board doesn't do school law anymore in person. They do it on webinar. And so I had visited with Rodney at convention. And he said he would be willing to do a training for us, but he prefers a Saturday just because of his work and stuff, and it's going to take longer. And so some of the stuff would be like special education, staff versus public complaint. We went to his open meetings law. They didn't touch on everything. It needs to be longer.
They ran out of time.
Yeah, same way with the public comments law. And then maybe do like student employee hearings if there's things we need to do. And then I thought we could invite administration if they chose to participate, if they had questions for the attorney. So we'll have to look at maybe when would be a good Saturday for that. And then I visited with you. I would like to set up a time in November to meet with all of the student councils, because each school has a, some of the schools have their own. If that would be okay with all of you, to meet with all of them, like do it at a time that's convenient. If it would be like right after school for them or at noon where they still have busing services. Plus the outlying schools would probably have to bring their kids in to meet with us. And then I was thinking, we have two schools this year. We hold our board meetings at Littleburg in December and Rosebud is May. And then something to think about, what is the interest in trying to reach any of those smaller out of town schools this year besides those two? If you, if you know, if you would be interested in maybe going to Hidawg or Spring Creek or Arcoine, if that's because we know their enrollment is down, we know, start preparing for that. So that might be something.
Are we going to, this Indian policies and procedures? Are we going to do some of that?
Well, I wanted you guys to look at it. I appreciate you guys looking at it last Wednesday. I've done a work session. And if you guys are okay with it, we'll go ahead and put that language in exactly in policy ABA, and we'll bring that to the next board meeting for your approval.
That would be on there too.
For Josh.
What was the policy number?
ABA.
Did anybody else?
Yeah, well, we've got Chad here. Chad, give us an update on Rosebud.
Okay, Rosebud, I just got an update. The first panel is going to be coming next week along with the first structural steel, I believe.
So the...
Bus farm building package is going to be delivered in two weeks also, so you're going to start seeing that going up very quickly. I'll give you a high school. We're about 95% done on the plumbing. Tyler should finish up tiling this week. The partitions may take, may go into next week, but that project is coming to an end as far as the locker room period there. And then in addition, you don't as Todd County Middle School. They mobilized last week. We had a meeting on site last week. They have agreed to take the old track and they're going to actually utilize and put it in as a road between the middle school and the elementary for...
Nice.
Where our buses go.
Nice.
With some extra, we're going to go access for, down to this practice football field for some of our staff there. The access is going to go up to the bus shop. If you guys are knowing of anybody that's needing about 40 loads of dirt, they're going to end up doing that. And I'm not sure where we're going to put anything like that. So that question was brought up to me today.
Forty loads of dirt? Like road base? You'd like what kind of dirt?
Well, it'd be whatever's underneath the track when they go through it and before they put their new base down for this new track.
It's going to be block dirt, because that's what's up here.
So I'm assuming, but...
With maybe a little bit of sand, but not much.
Clayton was actually going to reach out to a few agencies and see if there's someone interested in that, so.
On that, on that note, Chad, we need to set up a facilities meeting too.
Yeah.
So a time that would...
Yeah, whatever you guys want to do.
Whatever's going to work for you. We need to probably have that sooner than later to discuss.
Okay.
South. And housing.
Yeah. Did I answer enough questions on Rosebud?
Yeah, I just, so basically the footings are all in and everything?
That's all, it's all ready to go for walls.
Good, good. Plumbing is all done and everything?
Plumbing's coming along real good.
Okay, good.
You're going to, once the walls start going up, that's when everyone's going to get excited.
Getting excited too.
I'm cutting myself shaving, Jesus. I'm starting bleeding. I'm a blood thinner, so.
Oh dear, hope pressure.
Anything else? Consent agenda?
One more thing. Clayton called me, Chad. I remember if my son was in the area. I said, somebody quit today down there, so.
Just today.
Just today.
Just this afternoon.
Yeah, I said, no, he's working and wrapping now, so.
So we'll get that one every case. We're going to have to talk about it.
Bang, she can't even go.
Any update on the HR person?
Just the one that I mentioned last week. Nothing else.
So what do we have for bus drivers, Chad?
As far as...
You have a mission. How many do we have?
I'd have to count and look, to be honest with you. It doesn't, it sounds like we're doing a pretty good job. I think everyone's stepping up and doing a pretty good job. I think we've got an opportunity to upgrade the CDLs for a couple of individuals down there that are willing to do that.
Good.
So we're in that process, but...
It's nice to putting Facebook, and at the wrong time, out to the public.
Yeah, even when Josh isn't here or he's on a non-contract day, he'll still, does it, he still does it for us. Just because it's pretty important to get that out in the morning.
Thanks, Chad.
Yes, you're welcome.
Hey, nothing else? Motion to approve the consent agenda? Or was this fine? Was there any of it that needed to go into exec? Or were you all fine with it?
I have to push it on number four on volunteers substitutes. Hasn't been on the news list before.
He was wrong. Can we go onto exec?
Do you want to go onto exec for that one? So, so we'll approve everything except volunteers and substitutes.
Yep.
The whole section?
The whole section was instead, we'll do the whole section. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
By Linda? Second by Deb? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. So substitutes C. C substitutes and volunteers go onto exec. Okay, we have the memorandum of agreement regarding absences for work due to COVID-19 that we discussed at our work session. Any, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Linda?
My second.
Second by Tim. Are there any questions, comments?
What was the final decision on payment?
It's the five days.
Just up to five days?
Yeah, because that's what the CDC is still recommending.
Yep.
Okay. Just to clarify that, just five days.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, then the policy, CBI, CVIE 1 and CVIE 2. We went over this at our work session also. This is to update the superintendent evaluation. Is there a motion? Moved by Deb?
My second.
Second by Tim. Is there any questions or comments?
None for me.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, declare surplus items. We also talked about this at our work session. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Linda?
My second.
Second by Tim. Are there any questions concerned?
Chad, you hadn't, didn't you add to that?
No.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the same donation of the surplus items. Is there a motion? Moved by Deb?
My second.
Second by Michelle. Any questions concerned?
How long are you giving them to get them out of there?
Well, I don't think anything's been said in the term right now.
Okay.
I mean, if you guys want to set...
I think they're just waiting for the decision tonight and then...
They're going to start moving them?
I know there's one that's, there's that not there.
There's one in the process already. The other two, I'm not sure, so. I guess I, we'd work with them, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Didn't know what happened at North with those trailers.
Well, that was a different situation. But, yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we're on the subject, Chad. I got a question on those two over here that are just completely shot. What are you going to do with those?
Probably surplus.
They were pretty bad, huh?
Okay, 8.1. With or without waiver? So when you make your motion, make it to with or without the waiver.
I'll make the motion with.
My second.
Do you guys read your letter? I think that it should be without liquidated damages.
I agree.
What was the reason? We can go to exec if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, we better take this one, two, set, go left, hold off on eight. Okay. Meetings, we have a regular board meeting. Does anybody want to pick a policy night? Because I think we need to address that before we address facilities, because according to state law, when we have our policies up on the web, they should be current, up to date in how our book looks. And that isn't how they look right now. So is there evening that soon that works? When will Josh be back?
He's around.
When would he be available? Because isn't he going to Board Dogs training?
He is going to Board Dogs training. I just don't know when that is.
It's like the second week of September, I would say.
Can I get with him and then get ahold of you?
Yeah, will that work for you guys?
Sooner the better, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Facilities. Does anybody want to throw something out? Chad, you're going to be going to State Fair, aren't you?
No.
But you're going to DC, aren't you?
No, we're going to DC.
When are you going to DC?
I believe it's the 14th through the 20th.
Yeah.
How coming week?
You have to wait till after that, huh?
Must do it before, but that'd be next week.
I'll free anytime except the 13th. I have a doctor waiting.
I don't have any. I can come anytime, so.
Deb?
I'm doing Wednesday's night.
Wednesday's is yours?
I've been bored. When are you coming back, Chad?
We'll be back the 20th. So I'll be back in the, in the office on the 21st.
So how about between 11 and...
11, we have a board meeting.
On the 11th.
What about the...
We're going to try the 12th.
12?
Not the 13th. Linda said she's...
Not the 13th. What about the 12th?
Yeah, that would work for me.
I, I can do it, but I have a little guy I got to figure out to pick up from. But I, he's waiting at the bus stop now. Let me leave at the front. As soon as I go here, I'll go get him. So I've just got this little edge trying to figure out how to... Because with our later school days, and then they do extracurricular activities. Any... I can do it. I might just, just a teen bit late.
Okay, so we'll do the 12th. Okay. Which...
5:30.
5:30 would? Oh, oh, with five? Wait, yeah, no.
I haven't been ready.
Five, with five be better for you, Michelle?
Well, he doesn't get over there until 5:20.
Oh, okay, so...
So I tried to...
5:30.
So, yeah, go. Sit down 5:30, but I just, you know, I'll just know that I'll just have to go pick him up.
Okay.
If they come here, I don't want them stranded for a really long time.
All right. With that being said, then we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel. STC, 125 to 1. Michelle, did you?
Yes, I am.
Seven. Deb, at 5:51.
Call in favor?
Call in favor?
Yes.
Yes.